We're gonna start with our invocation and then we're gonna do the pledge of the flag. On our, on our agenda... That's why you're here, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Oh. I knew you looked kinda reverently, but I wasn't sure why, I wasn't sure why else you might be here. Yeah, well, I knew, I knew that now, that I didn't, I wasn't sure that's why he was here, though. I don't wanna assume anything. Okay. Will you come up and give us a prayer, Ms. Rose?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Father, thank you for our great city. Thank you for these men and women who lead. Father, I thank you for the many women that protect our freedom and we thank you for those who serve our city. Father, we just pray that your grace and mercy would rest on them tonight, the leadership, as they make decisions for our good. Father, we thank you for your peace in this Christmas season that rests on our city. And we pray, Father, that you continue to provide and protect us and bless us with your presence, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, tonight, we're very fortunate to have our assistant city manager be our manager and our assistant clerk be our clerk, so we welcome Randy and we welcome Laura. And they'll do the normal, good job that our folks do, so we're just glad to have y'all here. And with that, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 7th, 2016. No, we gotta do a roll call. Hold on, I'm sorry, back up, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor Allen?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mayor Protona Puck?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Broadway?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Coste?
Present.
And Councilmember Hand?
Present.
We're all here. Now, we gotta do the approval of the minutes for the meeting of November 7th, 2016. Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us, first say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the public comment period. If there's anybody in our audience that would like to speak for up to three minutes, we would welcome you to come up and speak for up to three minutes, if anybody wants to speak. Yes, ma'am, come on up. If you will, ma'am, give Laura your name and address. Back up a little bit, the other way, the other way. And look at, yeah, there you go, now look at us, there you go.
Yes, ma'am.
That way, we can hear you. Take the microphone, maybe, and put it down a little bit, if you want to.
Yes. You must be Ms. Laura.
She did.
Oh, good.
I'm Pamela Lawrence and I live at 400 South Jefferson Avenue in Goldsboro. I realize our city and many businesses and private citizens suffered great loss in the recent hurricane and flooding. I want to talk about the flooding at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Laurel Street. It is significant because it not only resulted in a great deal of damage to property in that area, but also because it was largely due to neglect by the city. This intersection flooded during Hurricane Floyd in 1999, causing very significant damage. The citizens complained to the city and were told the storm drains in this area are inadequate, but that there were plans to improve them. That has not happened, and through the years, the intersection has continued to flood and the draining after such flooding has continued to be slow. I'm one of the residents whose property was damaged in both the 1999 flood and the October 8th, 2016 flood. I'm still without central heat, still trying to salvage what I can from the rooms that were flooded. I'm on a waiting list for help removing that, uh, the trees that were uprooted by rapidly moving water, which swirled around the house as rescue vehicles drove by, causing giant waves. Two cars parked in my drive were lifted by the waves, both took in substantial quantities of water and one was damaged and considered total, the other was damaged rather severely as well. I've talked with my neighbors and have learned that at least six other households had similar or worse problems. I brought this issue to the attention of Mr. Anderson, the city engineer, and he has looked into the situation. He acknowledged that the storm drain does appear to be too small and that the problem does need to be addressed. I am bringing it to your attention in hopes that something can be done in the near future so that we do not have to face this problem again. I acknowledge that there are many who need attention, but I do hope that by bringing our problem to your attention, you can help see that we are not overlooked again.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Send that to here and we will look into it and see what we can do to help.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence, didn't you say that you have, still do not have heat at this point in time, right?
At this point in time, um, when I say do not have heat, I have a little electric heater I'm using, but my heating system was...
Okay.
And I got, uh, 21 inches of water inside the house as well as under the house.
But I take it the intersection floods even without the hurricanes? I mean, like it...
It does, it does. It floods, it, there was a little, uh, flooding yesterday from that quick damfall.
We'll get one Marty and see what we can figure out.
Ms. Lawrence, I have a question, Ms. Lawrence, real quick. Out of the front.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, well, with that, we'll call, we'll close our public comment period and we'll move to presentations. And our first one is Christ in Action. Denny, are you here? Are you here? Oh, yeah, come on up, Denny. Let me get this... I gotta put my glasses on so I can see. Is your wife with you?
She is.
Well, you gonna make her stay back there or you gonna let her come too?
You always look better with a pretty girl.
I'm trying to help you out, you know?
Thank you.
And how about Josh, are they here?
Josh and Amber are here.
Well, don't you think they ought to come up too?
Well, she can.
However, you wanna do it. The first thing we got is, I gotta find the thing. Hold on a minute. I might have to open them. Y'all look so good standing there, I'm just gonna let you stand a minute. So while I'm finding what I can't find, just for you good folks in the audience to know, Denny and his team at Christ in Action came in and met us right after the flood and, um, had equipment, had all kinds of help, and they came in and wanted to help the folks that needed help. And, uh, did an awesome job, they sit here, what, maybe a month, Denny?
Seven weeks.
And, uh, did, did phenomenal work in the, in the areas that needed it. And Generation Church, Josh and his wife and the whole congregation, they hosted them the whole time, we went to a couple of meetings out there. And it was just a phenomenal, phenomenal, all, good work that both of y'all did, and we really, really appreciate it. And somewhere or another, I have a resolution telling you that, but I can't find it, so do we have one somewhere else? Oh, is that all we're doing? Do we have, we don't have a resolution? Well, hell, I'm up here looking for something I ain't got.
We're hardly worth dying. No, it's been a long day. I'll be better.
But, but we do, we very much wanna thank you for all the work you did for all the folks in our community. It was just an awesome job, and I know you had a big team behind you, and we really enjoyed what you did, appreciate it. Well, you ain't gonna get it, you just wait, you got, I'm in charge of this operation now, you just wait.
Man, you need to know you're with me on this side. All right, come on. Some people's kids, you just don't learn. You gotta smile, but you're happy to be here with the mayor.
All right, we're going with you and your wife, y'all, y'all get up here too.
Hold on, let me get that picture.
Hey, it wasn't my fault, you worked for him. And I don't know about working for me. Look at these little Rochelle's up here getting a picture, this is nighttime, man. All right, y'all come up here too.
I'm gonna get a picture of him. There you go, act like you're happy. Oh, you're not smiling?
No.
Wonderful. All right, one more, all right, all five of them, all right, get it. She likes it, she changed it up real good.
Thanks.
She's been, you heard me saying that, I'm good.
Thank you so much.
You take as long as you want, you say what you'd like, as long as it's nice.
We are gonna be here for a long time, a preacher very seldom gets... No. I wrote, I wrote a, a letter for Rochelle, did you get the letter that I've written to the paper? I wanna read this to you, 'cause I think it's better than if I just ad lib it. And I'm not sure if I should face you or them.
You face them.
Yeah, 'cause I'm talking about you, so I wanna talk...
You face, you face them.
I wrote this down, "Christ in Action, uh, comes to the end of our deployment to the city of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne following Hurricane Matthew. I wanna give a public shout-out to the mayor and the city council of Goldsboro and the leadership of Wayne County. We've worked for decades alongside various cities and county governments across America, and these leaders have done an exemplary job." Mayor, uh, uh, I'm sorry, major disasters like the one from Hurricane Matthew are daunting, especially when there are thousands of residents who have been displaced and struggling to get back into their homes. I'm fully aware that some people may have had a less than good experience in this situation, but I would like to point out that I've seen many, many, many municipalities handle disasters big and small, and from my perspective, these guys did an excellent job. Uh, we've, we've met some of the finest people, that's from you folks, we've met some of the finest people as we've gone from home to home, pulling out sheet rock insulation ductwork and removing trees, people who are at their most trying times yet able to put a smile on their face and walk with determination to recover. I don't call these people victims, but I refer to them as survivors, because they are surviving and overcoming the obstacles in their path. I and my team have been blessed in so many ways by the residents. All of our volunteers have slept on the floor at Generation Church under the kind hospitality of Pastor Josh and Amber Clark and their church family. I've seen up close and personal the care and love that this church has for the community. I'm not speaking for every church, we've worked with Generation Churches, they have really stepped up to the place in a good way. Having an organization like ours invade your church for almost two months is a long period of time, and it's not easy and it's not cheap. The utility bills go through the roof and there's a lot of wear and tear on the facility, and they have given, they gave us free rein to do what we need to do to accomplish our mission of helping the people of Goldsboro. I wanna say on behalf of our staff, we have full-time staff, we have volunteer staff, I wanna say on behalf of our staff and all the volunteers who have come from so many different states, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to serve the residents of Goldsboro and of Wayne County, thank you for trusting us in your homes to get you to the point of being ready to rebuild, thank you for the prayers and kind words that you gave to us. We are the ones that benefited from the privilege of being able to serve this community. My prayer is that God will bless you and the leadership of this city. We have 127 volunteers from 12 different states, giving 7,363 volunteer hours. We left December 9th, but our hearts and our prayers remain here with so many people of Goldsboro. I just wanna say, uh, you know, sometimes we go in and we work like a, like a dog on steroids, we leave and the city's like, see ya.
See ya.
And, uh, for this, for this community to embrace us, to invite us back, to come out to our meetings, you guys did a good job. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough job. It's hard, there's so many people hurting, and, uh, I'm not blowing smoke, I'm, I'm serious, they, they did a really good job. People may complain, but there was a lot that you, you don't know about that went really well, and in a lot of communities, it just doesn't, so, anyway, thank you, it's been an honor working in this city. Thanks for having us back, thanks for making us feel appreciated.
Thank you.
God bless you and Merry Christmas.
We think that's... Danny, I see you still have preacher in you, about two more minutes, that would've been a sermon.
Well, we're, we're headed into the offering.
Oh, all right, all right. Well, thank y'all once again. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move to the resolution expressing services rendered by Officer Karen Keane DeMello as an employee of City of Goldsboro for more than 28 years. And before Karen comes up, I'm just gonna read it, so she doesn't have to stand so long. Whereas Karen Keane DeMello retires on January 1st, 2017, is a police captain with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 28 years of service. Whereas Karen began her career on February 10th, 1988, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department, and then whereas on January 17th, 1996, Karen was transferred to the Crime Prevention Unit with the Goldsboro Police Department. Whereas on October 6th, 1999, Karen was promoted to Training Sergeant with the Goldsboro Police Department. On January 1st, 2016, Karen was awarded the position of Police Captain with the Police Department, where she has served until retirement. Whereas Karen has proven herself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desires, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Karen Keane DeMello their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro in account of that, one, we express to Karen Keane DeMello our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the city of Goldsboro, two, we offer Karen our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors, and three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this, the 19th day of December 2016. Offer this for adoption. Move to adopt.
A second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Karen? Who's coming up to say good things about you? Ah, there he comes. She's, let's do the pictures, then you can talk. I think Karen can talk, boss. You gonna come up and do the picture?
This is, this is... I haven't seen much. All right. There's official police department.
Y'all know, I have to, I have to hear me.
Is that your husband? Well, tell him we're gonna get the center too, they have a good one. We don't get chief questions, people are talking.
Thank you.
All right, so you gonna talk first?
Just very brief. Captain, I appreciate your years of hard work and service to the department and to the city. It's a wonder, when I got hired, I was under a shift, and our captain was nice enough to put us, doubles up on overlap quite a few times, and it's, it's a wonder that we even worry about answer calls, 'cause we would argue most of the time like brother and sister. So, but, anyway, I appreciate everything you've done for me through my career, and I appreciate everything you've done for the department. And there's no doubt in my mind, she had one of the toughest jobs at the department, responsible for training, personnel, equipment, uniforms, and you are definitely, and I guess it's safe to say, will not be able to be replaced in that position. You have done wonders for the job, and I certainly appreciate your service, and I know the city does too. Thank you.
Do you want to raise it?
Um, I would like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to be working, working for the Goldsboro Police Department as well as working in the city of Goldsboro, because Goldsboro is a great place, and it has meant a lot to me to have the opportunity to live out my dream of becoming a, a police officer many years ago, and to be able to, so, I've accomplished it.
Well, it won't be long before we're home, you guys, it's gonna start for me.
Thank you.
All right, and we got one more, and this, this is almost a newcomer, I don't know why he's leaving, but I'll read it to you, maybe you can figure out why. Whereas John Carl Parks retires on January 1st, 2017, as a fire captain with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 35 years of service. Whereas Carl began his career on June 2nd, 1981, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department, and on August 29th, 1990, Carl was promoted to Fire Engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department. Where on Ju-, July 29th, 1988, Carl was promoted to Fire Captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he served until his retirement. Whereas Carl has proven himself to be dedicated and efficient public servant, who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Carl Parks their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that, one, we express to Carl Parks our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro, two, we offer Carl our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors, and three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this, the 19th day of December 6th, 2016. Offer this resolution for adoption. Any discussion? All of us say aye?
Aye.
All right, Carl.
I'm all right.
Still looking, huh?
With him and Trent.
Eight years. You gotta smile, you gotta look like you're happy to be standing. Get that to do this going on there?
I do.
You want to, you want to talk first or you want to talk?
I'm not somebody.
Well, let's get a picture with him, 'cause he is, I don't know, I like him, he looks special, I like him, I like him, so. All right, it sure was tough, um, if there's ever been a example of a dedicated citizen before he just stands on it, um, he don't like to talk about it, but, um, Carl is a cancer survivor three times. Wow. Good. The remarkable thing about that is, during his three bouts of that, um, he probably didn't stay out of work more than 30 days total at any time, um, and all total together. Uh, he worked through chemotherapy treatments, he worked through radiation treatments, whatever, but he was, he was always there and worked through it. Toughest, toughest guy I've ever worked with. Um, he's been a mentor to me, and I'd like to see you go there.
I hate to go there. I just appreciate the city for hiring me, um, to begin with, 'cause, um, if that city and fire department hadn't hired me, I wouldn't have got to do what all the little boys' dreams are doing, that's play with fire trucks all the time, so, I've had a good time at it and enjoyed it, and...
Thank you.
You gonna come back and see him when he gets that new half-dog truck he's bought?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ride motorcycle there and sit across the street and watch him laugh at a lot of things.
All right, well, now we've got the introduction of the Arts Council Director. Oh, she is here, I don't say she is, but she is here, okay. Well, y'all come on up. How are y'all tonight?
Good, well, cool. Um, hello, my name's Martha Carnegie, I'm Board President of the Arts Council Wayne County, and it's my privilege to introduce Wendy Snow Walker, she is our new Executive Director of the Arts Council Wayne County. Ms. Walker is a professional actor and arts educator with more than 20 years of experience developing and administrating visual and performing arts programs throughout the mid-Atlantic region. She's worked with the Allegheny County Board of Education to create an after-school arts program for at-risk students and a literature-based performing arts program at the Bishop Walts School in Maryland. Additionally, she has experienced developing strategic plans and planning, implementing visionary programs and connecting artists with businesses and the community at large. She recently wrote in a letter, "The arts connect us, it comforts us, and it gives us all an outlet to express our humanity. Your support helps to make it possible for the Arts Council to be a beacon of hope, a place of business, a wealth of knowledge, and a point of inspiration. We feel extremely lucky to have found her, and please welcome her to Wayne County."
Welcome.
Thank you, Martha, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, it's nice to see all of you. As you may or may not know, the arts are a $499 billion a year industry in this country, and you all have a thriving arts community here, Sarah Merritt has done an outstanding job, there are foundations that are very strong for arts education and community connections and economic development, and it is my personal mission to make sure we carry on all of those things, so that we can all do more, be more, and see more in Goldsboro, all connected to the arts. So, I'm very familiar with the SMART initiative, I've been in a lot of meetings since I arrived four months and four days ago, and, um, in the coming year, you will hear a lot more about that, and we'll make a lot more connections about how we can help to really initiate those public art programs that will connect us with the businesses even more.
Well, we look forward to working with you, and I'm sure anybody got any questions or everybody good?
Yep. Thank you very much.
We're here, we'll be there to see you, I'm sure.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
You too. All right, so next, we got a public hearing, Z 1116, General.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item F is Z 1116, M A D P, Goldsboro LLC. The property is located on the west side of Wayne Memorial Drive between Fourth Street and Sixth Street. Property is indicated on the map in the red hatched area. The applicant is requesting the general business conditional district to limit the use of the property to the retail sale of automotive, parts, and accessories. At this time, no development plans have been submitted, but will be acquired and approved Um, the property is currently zoned neighborhood business, the property is currently vacant, and the city's adoptive land use plan recommends commercial development for the property. You can see that, um, both to the left and right, the property is zoned commercial, or, I'm sorry, let me go back to the previous map, is zoned neighborhood business, however, our land use plan, um, does call for the area to be commercial. There's, uh, city water and sewer are available to the property, and the subject property is not located within a special flood hazard area. This is an aerial photography of the location, um, and again, showing that the property is vacant. N C D O T has reviewed the proposed use and will require driveway permit for access off Wayne Memorial Drive, and as stated before, in addition to the rezoning, uh, change, the applicant has requested a waiver of the site plan requirement at time of rezoning. If rezoned, development plans will be approved by the council separately. At this time, no action is necessary, planning commission will have a recommendation for council at their meeting, January 3rd, 2017. And here are just some pictures, um, of the site. Any questions?
Any questions? You done? All right, this is a public hearing for Z 1116, changing from neighborhood business to general business conditional district. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. If you would, give us, give the clerk your name and address, sir.
I'm, uh, Justin Church, the Philly Ridge Environmental, and address is 126 Executive Drive, Wilkesboro, 2869.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, my name is Justin Church, and I'm the civil engineer for the project, and, uh, as the planning staff has said, uh, the request of rezoning does fall within the comprehensive plan, and, uh, so basically, I just wanna make myself available for any questions you might have. It is an auto parts store, it would be a nice building, uh, with smart architectural upgrades, and, uh, of course, we'll come back for, for all that, but...
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, if not, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next, Z 1216, Classic Goldsboro LLC.
Item G is Z 1216, Classic Goldsboro LLC. The property is located on the south side of Gateway Drive between Commerce Court and North Oak Forest Road. The applicant has requested, uh, the general business... The applicant has requested the general business conditional district to limit the use of the property to a parking lot expansion in conjunction with an existing use for the display and sale of automobiles. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the site plan requirement. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant will be required to have a site plan approved by city council before issuance of any building permit. The property is indicated on the map in the hatched, or the red hatched area. You know, this is the existing car sales lot, Jeep Chrysler. Oak Forest Road is here, Commerce Court here. Currently, the proposed site is part of a larger undeveloped tract reserved for development within Wayne County's industrial park. The property is currently vacant. The property is located outside the city limits, however, since city utilities are available within 1,000 feet, the owner will be required to submit an annexation petition before the issuance of any construction permits. The property is currently zoned industrial business park one. As previously stated, the applicant proposes to rezone the subject property to general business conditional district, in order to expand an adjacent parking lot for the display and sale of new automobiles. The city's land use plan recommends industrial development for this property, including a mixture of commercial and industrial uses of various types in a single coordinated development. City water and sewer are available to the property, the subject property is not located within a special flood hazard area. At this time, no action is necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council at their meeting on January the 3rd. This is aerial photography showing the area to be expanded, and again here's the existing dealership. And here are some photos of the site. Any questions?
Any questions? Alright, thank you, General. This is a public hearing for Z1216, Classic Goldsboro LLC. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Nobody wants to speak? We'll close this public hearing and we'll move to the next, CU1616, Phoenix T LLC.
Item H is CU1616, Phoenix T LLC. This property is located on the east side of US 117 South between Arrington Bridge Road and South George Street. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an internet cafe. An internet cafe was previously approved and operated at this location on September the 3rd, 2013. On August 4th, 2014, the council approved an amendment to allow an increase in the number of machines from 20 to 35, based on requiring 1.5 parking spaces per machine, which would accommodate the 52 spaces existing on the property. The applicant closed the business in March of 2016 upon order from the District Attorney's Office. However, they now contend that the software they are using is in compliance with the state law and wishes to operate at the same location and under the previously approved site and floor plans. Hours of operation are 10 a.m. to 2 a.m., seven days a week, and the number of employees are two. The site and landscape plan, which you see before you, for this operation were previously approved with the following modifications: rear buffer due to grade separation at railroad tracks, vehicle surface buffer at rear due to existing pavement and right-of-way, street tree requirement to allow placement elsewhere, and distance from vacant residentially zoned property from 200 feet to 125 feet. At this time, there is no action necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council at their meeting January the And again, here are some photos of the existing site.
Can you get a teaser? Can't get rid of the teaser. That'd make a bad penny.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I still have a fight with the name of internet cafes, when it's all about sweepstakes versus actually using internet. I just, like, trying to get you guys to get, to understand this, you know, it's not actually using internet, it's actually sweepstakes. So, we can figure a way that we can start calling that as sweepstakes places, that would be great, but other than that...
Alright, thanks, General. This is a public hearing for Phoenix T LLC. Would anybody like to speak, for or against? Would anybody like to speak? Alright, if not, we're gonna close this public hearing and we'll move to CU1716.
Your final public hearing item tonight is Item I, CU1716, Ismail Quandil. The property is located on the northwest corner of South Slocum Street and Harrell Street. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store within the neighborhood business zoning district. Property is indicated on the map in the red hatched area. The property was formerly operated as Bob's Supermarket, but has been vacant for some time. The applicant previously operated a convenience store at Brookside Market at the corner of South Slocum Street and Seymour Street. He intends to relocate his business to the subject property. The existing building, which was constructed in 1965, contains 9,019 square feet, and based on one parking space per 200 square feet of gross floor area in the structure, a total of 45 parking spaces would be required. The site contains approximately 20 paved parking spaces, none of which would comply with the city's off-street parking design standards relative to backing movements and circulation space. There is an additional space at the rear of the property, which would be paved and striped. However, the applicant has requested a modification to allow the existing parking on the site to remain. He contends that the majority of his business will be pedestrian-oriented, and that relocating and paving would be cost prohibitive. The city would, however, require that the existing spaces be restripped due to fading, and if necessary, that bumper guards be installed. Car and gutter does not exist along either Slocum Street or Harrell Street, and access to the parking area is predominantly open along both frontages. A 15-foot-wide Class B buffer yards are required along the northern and western property lines. In addition, street trees and interior plantings are required in order to meet our landscaping requirements. The applicant is requesting a modification of the buffer, street tree, and interior planting requirements. At this time, there is no action necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for councils meeting on January the 3rd. And here are some photographs of the existing site. Any questions?
Any questions?
Do you know what hours of operation they're gonna have?
I do not at this time.
He's out there, so we'll ask him.
The applicant, I believe, is present and maybe be able to answer those questions for you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, this is a public hearing for CU1716, Ismail Quandil. Anybody like to speak, for or against? Oh, sir, I'm sorry, you gotta be sworn in, I didn't catch it was conditional use. And ma'am, if you want to speak, come let her swear you in now too, if we can, that'll make it a little bit faster. If anybody else wants to speak, we need to swear you in now, would be great. Come, come right up, yeah. Yes, sir?
My name is Ismail Qandil, I am the owner of Brookside, and you know, the situation of the building in Brookside is getting so old, and this is the only supermarket in the neighborhood, like the mayor he know. What I decide is the closest place, this is place, and I wanna shut the Brookside Market, and we move into a new building. And the only problem we have, the parking lot, the way is the building built a long time ago, and we ask now just to give us exceptionist, we could just move all of the product, all of everything to this location.
Sir, what would your hours be?
My hours are from 8 to 11.
8 to 11?
Seven days a week.
Now, it's not my district, but I understand that, you know, there's a lot of hanging out in a lot of the stores.
No hanging out.
It may not be your store, but I, but my concern is, what are you gonna do to make sure people are not hanging out and there's no crime?
You know, I do my best. Maybe everybody know the location, two projects, I'm in the middle, the police he knows, I put cameras direct with the police, go, could watch everything. I put security, and I do my best, like owner inside, I can't change the people, I can't change the neighborhood, but I do my best, don't let nobody hang around. But this place is, nobody able to hang around, because this is a street, direct, nobody. That store is, you have to go inside parking lot, you have to hide behind the building, but this one is different. And we have, like, everybody do, we have cameras all over, cover this building in front. We do our best, this is the way we could do. We don't have other options, and we cooperate with the police all of the time.
Okay, it's just a question.
And the main things, maybe you know the neighborhood over there, because this is the only stores, I've been in that area 15 years. And this store been, even at Brookside, been years and years. We tried to change it, but we couldn't. This is the way it is. But I do my best, don't stay inside the store, don't hang around, don't stay inside the store. But I seen it now, in this store, is because you have heavy traffic, nobody allowed to stand outside, signs everywhere, nobody can go inside the store too. If you see that, the way it's built.
This is the Bob's, correct?
Yeah, Bob's too. Bob's too. And a new building, better than the other building, and the mayor know we wanna demolish that building completely.
Any more, generally, any questions?
I have a question. What are, what are, what are types of items you're gonna be selling? Are they gonna be any different than the items you were selling down at Brookside than what you're selling now? Any better quality, substance of food?
Neighborhood store is sold cereal, milk, groceries, children, milk, medicine for the children, and whatever you, most of the stuff, everybody use. Now, we try, and I'll be honest with you, I, after, the problem where we have hang, but then we lost a beer license there, which is barely we survive over there. Because, you know, over, any neighborhood, any neighborhood, need beer, without beer you can't survive. Maybe you work six months, one year, then you be out of business. And because I am, I don't pay no rent, no nothing, I survive over there for a year. We'll see, now I moved to more hard, this place now, it's, I have to pay like 1,500 every month I have to pay. If we don't make that money, it mean we have to go out of business, and we have to leave that area. And you have to know, this is the only, and five mile around, if you go to the neighborhood, most of the people is, doesn't have no cars, old people, a lot of kids. And I have too many people, no way those can walk five, six miles to get anything he need.
I understand that, but you said beer, what, I mean, when I ask, I'm saying, what are you selling that might be of a better quality, as far as fruits, vegetables, fresh meats, anything in that?
Yeah, we have, we have like cold cuts, you know, cold cut, like bologna, sausage, eggs, all of the, you know, not meat department, because those, you know, what, whatever you need, like, to survive, the necessary stuff, sugar, whatever you need, the grocery, we have it, over there in this store. But like I told you, it's, if we don't get a beer license in this location, no way we can survive more than one year.
You're saying a beer license, correct? Like alcohol?
ABC.
Okay.
I just want you to understand something, you are way high on our radar, in your location, okay? The location that you had, if it were up to me, we would tear you down and put you out of business. So the inspections department has give you that ninth life, I will say. But if we go, you're getting a conditional use, if we go, and so we see litter all the time, you're doing things that our police department has to be over there, like you were at the other store. If we see law, I promise you, we're gonna come after you with all of the city of Goldsboro, because we're gonna clean that area up, and we will figure out how to get this, don't even, let me finish. The only reason you're even getting a chance is because we do believe those people over there need a store, but they need a good store, and they need a store that sells good products. And if you're not gonna do that, we're not gonna partner with you. I mean, we feel like we've given you another opportunity, you need to take good advantage of the opportunity, you need to get the old store tore down, you need to get that lot cleaned up, and I want you to understand that you're getting a conditional use. So we can come back if you don't do what you're supposed to do, and we will come back. We ride that area a lot, and we're gonna clean up that street, and we want your help, but if you're not gonna help us, we're gonna do it anyway. Okay?
You know, I, like I told you, I am 60 years old.
I just want you to understand.
Believe me, I do my best, and I do harder, hard job. I am not a guy came from, you know, I work 14, 12 hours a day. But you know what, if my store, this store can run like Brookside, I shut it down before you tell me.
That's a good attitude.
You have to know that. Now, if you walk to the store, even I, before this meeting, I stopped because I wanna know where I am, where I'm standing. Any project, if you go to the shelf, everything fresh, new, we check dates, everything, you know what I mean? Because I wanna, we wanna start over there to be like, we learn from that store. We don't need no hang around, nobody, nothing. Even the people we know, he deal with the drugs, he's not allowed to come inside the store. Even the doors inside the store over there, we have magnetic, if customer you don't like it, you close it, tell him, please, go to different store, we don't need you here. We did, I wanna do a lot of things to at least, you know, it's, I don't let 10 people, 15 people destroy for 2,000 people store. I don't do, I don't let that. In the same thing, this is my business, I support two families, and you know that. I lose my brother in that store. But I wanna support, support the people and support myself, and I try to do my best.
We'll do your best.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
About this particular property, every photo that you have of this property, my house is in it. Actually, my house is right beside this store. I moved in this house with my father and my siblings when I was 10 years old. I am now 34. I have not seen anything productive come from that property. We're talking about shootings, a murder occurred across that street. My house has been broken into twice. Police constantly going up and down the street. My thing is, if it's not gonna benefit the community, it does not need to be open. That's how I feel about it. The little things, I keep hearing him say, beer license. We don't need a beer license, we don't need it. To be honest with you, if we can have something other than a convenience store, something like a police substation, that would help a lot. I don't know how you feel about it, but I feel strongly that we do need a police substation in that area. It has been quiet since the previous convenience store has been closed. We have not had any issues on that block, I understand there are not that many houses on that block, but we have not had any issues on that block, and it's been fairly quiet, it's been fairly peaceful. He's saying the hours are gonna be from 8 to 11, I'm sorry, I'm a teacher, I don't wanna hear racket next to me, I'm trying to go to sleep, I have children to educate. And as far as ducking bullets, the shootouts, the fighting, the unnecessary arguing, it's not, I don't think that store should be open. If someone is not coming into that community to utilize that property for the benefit of it, I feel that it does not need to be open.
Thank you very much, the planning commission's here, they've heard your comments, and so they'll take those into account as well. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Alright, well if not, we'll close this public hearing, we'll thank the planning commission for your hard work, you've got several items to work on here for your next, and I hope you all have great holidays, and thank you for your service this past year, and we look forward to seeing you next year. At least most of you. Give them a minute to get out. With that, we've got the consent agenda, and since we went over that in the work session, we'll just call for it, but we won't go back to do it again.
The mayor presented his items J through M, presented for your consideration, any item may be removed and voted on individually if you would like.
Move to adopt the consent agenda, J through M.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
We got half a vote.
I was giving, I was seeing if you were awake, Mr. Attorney.
Mayor Al.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Prosser A. Puck.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember State.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Ham.
Yes. Alright, consent agenda's approved, thank you. Next, we have under items requiring individual action, we have the selection of Mayor Pro Tim, so we would need a motion on that.
I make a motion, we change, change.
We, 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 sorry, Tim.
I'm sorry. Last year, I accepted the post of Mayor Pro Tim, and at that time, I said I only wanted to do it one year, and that was to serve under, I was asked to serve, and I have enjoyed it, but I'm ready to let someone else have it. So, I'm gonna recommend and I nominate Bevan Foster for Mayor Pro Tim.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion carries. Alright, so Mr. Foster, starting in January, will be our new Mayor Pro Tim. But we are gonna swear him into office tonight. So, we're gonna do the oath of office, and our clerk Laura's gonna do that. So, Bevan, you're gonna have to go down there with Laura. Guy Rochelle's getting all kinds of pictures tonight. I think they're starting to pay you by the picture now.
Hi. Oh, you were gonna say about, okay, I said about. Hi, Dr. James Foster. You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina. The highest assistance therewith, so that I entreat this charge to do these of office as Mayor Pro Tim in the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, so that we got.
Alright, good job. Alright, next we have the city manager report.
I would like to wish everyone happy holidays, encourage any of those that are traveling to please travel safely and return back safely to Goldsboro.
Alright, city attorney?
Just wish you Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year.
Alright, well, with that, we've got some resolutions that I'll read for just a minute. Resolution express appreciation for service rendered by James Roach as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for 17 years. James Roach retires on January 1, 2017 as a distribution supervisor with Public Works Department of the City of Goldsboro for more than 17 years of service. Whereas James began his career on March 24, 1999 as a Labor One with the Public Works Department. On October 2001, James was promoted to water meter technician within the Public Works Department. On August 27, 2008, James was promoted to utility operator system with the Public Works Department. And on June 29, 2016, James was promoted to distribution supervisor with the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Whereas James has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to James Roach their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that one, we express to James our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro. Two, we offer James our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this and 19th day of December 2016. Offer this for adoption.
So, move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion carries. Alright, the next one is a resolution express appreciation for service rendered by Kerry Faulkner as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 25 years. Kerry Faulkner retires on January 1, 2017 as an animal control officer with the Goldsboro Police Department in the City of Goldsboro with more than 25 years of service. Kerry began his career on May 22, 1991 as a labor supervisor one with the Public Works Department. On December 23, 1992, Kerry was promoted to cemetery supervisor with the Public Works Department. On April 20, 1995, Kerry was transferred to the Goldsboro Police Department as police equipment maintenance coordinator. On November 27, 1996, Kerry was transferred to the Animal Control Officer with the Goldsboro Police Department, where he has served until his retirement. Whereas Kerry has proved himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous, on behalf of themselves, city employees and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Kerry Faulkner their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that one, we express to Kerry Faulkner our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Kerry our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this and after the 19th day of December 2016. Offer that for adoption.
So, move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion carries. Okay, next one, we got one for Charles Holly as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 35 years. Charles Holly retires on January 1, 2017 as a fleet maintenance supervisor with the Public Works Department of the City of Goldsboro for more than 35 years of service. Charles began his career on July 22, 1981 as auto mechanic one with the Public Works Department. On August 18, 1982, Charles was promoted to auto mechanic two with the Public Works Department. Over the next several years, Charles' position was reclassified to the following position title within the Public Works Department, fleet mechanic three, fleet mechanic four. On January 1, 2014, Charles' position was again reclassified as a fleet mechanic supervisor with the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Charles has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Charles Holly their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the City of Goldsboro over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that one, we express to Charles Holly our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Charles our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the 19th day of December 2016. Offer that for adoption.
So, move.
Second. All in, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion carries. Alright, so that's gonna move us to council member comments, and I think we started down there last time, so we're gonna start down there this time.
Just wanna wish everybody a happy holiday, I want you to eat good, treat your family and friends good, and just remember what it's truly about, it's about Christ. Happy holidays.
I'd just like to echo Councilman Williams, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and drive safely.
That's all, sir. Mark?
I'd like to say about the same thing, just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. Also, wanted to speak and say, if there is anyone that is still having issues with FEMA, please go down to their office, and it's at the WA Foster. We'll be down there within the next, within the next couple of days and being back and forth with them and handling and helping him get into, speaking with their main supervisors and things of that nature. So, they're saying, wishing you a Merry Christmas as well, but they want to help you out as much as they can. And if they are having issues, trying to get help, they're pushing forth as hard as they can. So, we're gonna keep that in the spirit and try to work together and go forth. So, Merry Christmas to all, and we'll leave going.
Please, sir. Mr. Ham?
I just wanted to amplify the, the comments concerning wishing everyone a Merry Christmas. This has been a challenging year, at least part of it, for residents of Goldsboro. But as spoken earlier tonight, our city has come together, both within and outside, and we have overcome this issue for the most part. There are still people that are having issues to deal with, but this has been a time that we need to reflect on how we as a community have come together and worked for a better cause. Wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, I would like to mention it's two groups that are doing some special things in the community over the holidays. One of the groups is Mr. James Leonard. His group is Tell 'Em Why You Mad, a little crazy name, but they've been doing some great things. He'll be doing a Christmas giveaway at 5 o'clock at the boxing gym on Herman Street. If you'd like to donate, or if you have any kids that are in need, bring them by. Also, Mr. Anthony Langson and Mr. Jermaine Dawson, they're doing an event at the Holiday Inn Express Saturday at 5 o'clock. And they're also doing a giveaway in serving plates. So, if you'd like to donate, or if you know anybody that's in need, please bring them out. And those guys are there to help. Thank you, and have a happy holidays.
You know, I'd just like to reiterate the Merry Christmas and hope everybody is safe, but think of others during this period, that a lot of people who are hurting. We had five members of our team who retired, and between the five of them, they had 140 years of total service. And I appreciate it, and wish them Godspeed.
Is that it?
Yep.
Alright, well, as we close this year out, I would do wanna say that we've had a really successful year, I believe, here at the City of Goldsboro, with a lot of projects we've gotten done, a lot of projects we're working on doing next year. So, I'm really excited about next year, we have had some setbacks with Matthew. A lot of people still suffering, but we know that, and I think we're working on that and doing what we can to do that. I do wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, I hope everyone has a great holiday season. I do wanna ask that if you're gonna drink, please, please don't drive. We just had a tragic, unnecessary death last week. That if somebody had just planned ahead, and just if you're gonna drink, don't drive. It's really quite that simple. So, we would encourage all our citizens, we don't wanna deal with that kind of stuff over these holidays. So, with that, I hope everybody does have a Merry Christmas, and we will stand adjourned.